And meeting, all wrapped up into one bundle of joy. We'll start with a pledge. I'll ask Mayor Protam Foster to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Foster. Let the records reflect that all council members are present and accounted for. We'll start with review of the minutes. Since this is a combined workshop and meeting, we will be taking action on those items permitting it. So review of the minutes, June 5th and June 10th, regular meetings. Are there any... We'll start with a motion, then we'll discuss any amendments.
I make a move to approve both sets of minutes.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or amendments for the review of the minutes? All right. If we're satisfied, all in favor of approving the minutes from June 5th and June 10th, regular meetings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. They are approved. Next, we're going to open up a public hearing for ordinance 07, 2019, amendment to the Tawnytown zoning code. Does anyone wish to hear about that before we actually open the public hearing? Or is the council satisfied? All right. I will open the public hearing. Does anyone from the public have any comments they'd like to make regarding the amendment to Tawnytown zoning code?
Good evening.
Please state your name.
My name's Clark Schaefer, 73 East Main Street, Westminster. I'm here on... I'm a lawyer representing a client, and that client is the contract purchaser of what's known as the old Sheetz property, which is currently being pursued for alcoholic beverage packaged goods stores. I'm here in support of the ordinance. I realize that this is not about a single property, but is applicable to your downtown zone, and I applaud you for this business-friendly amendment. Alcoholic beverage packaged goods, and I know it has other... The ordinance has other aspects about adult entertainment, which, you know, I have no comment on, and I think it's a good idea. But alcoholic beverage packaged goods stores are the proti... are a prototypical small business. They're heavily regulated under the liquor laws of Carroll County and the state of Maryland, as I think you're aware, because I'm aware that the liquor inspector has sent a memo to you to be included in the public record explaining how the liquor board and the state law regulates them. And so that solves any kind of public concern, if there is one, about an unnecessary proliferation of these things. Rather, what this ordinance does is allow the productive, economically productive use of a piece of property or properties that are located in appropriate zones, namely your downtown zone. And they are strictly regulated as to their... by the liquor laws in all other respects. So I'm here in support of the ordinance, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Anyone else from the public like to make any comments regarding this amendment? All right. I will leave the public hearing open for a little bit longer in case anyone shows up a little late. In the meantime, we will move on. I will ask the public if they have any comment regarding agenda or non-agenda items tonight. We are combining the two because it's a combined meeting. So anyone from the public who would like to comment on agenda or non-agenda items, please feel free.
Good evening. Chris Tillman, Georgia's on York, 10 York Street. I have a question, and maybe Jim or Jay you can answer. Are engine retarder brakes prohibited in the city of Tawnytown?
The city doesn't have a noise ordinance. I know there are signs posted on the state roads with regard to modified exhaust systems for trucks, but the city code is silent with regard to Jake brakes or Jacobson braking.
Is that something that we could move forward about? You know, as someone who lives right close to the light, you know, we hear it all the time. And on essentially a flat piece of ground, someplace where the speed limit is 35 miles an hour, it is not a necessity to be using Jake brakes in the middle of town. And I wonder if there's something we can do about that. Do I direct that to the zoning officer and to the council in general?
I mean, we can explore. In the past, I've talked to other municipalities who... They have not been able to enforce. The best that they could do is simply put up signs saying you're not allowed to use it, but there was no way they could enforce it. But it's something we could explore further. Contacts and people at MML. Jim, do you have any more information about that?
Just a quick note on that. When it comes to regulating vehicles, we're preemptive by the state. We can't pass laws that would change what... Let's see. It's the state police commercial vehicle team that enforces the vehicle law.
Right.
And while we could certainly promote the idea of expanding that team or having more teams to better enforce those laws, we can't make a local law that would contradict that or that we would enforce ourselves.
Right.
Do we know what it is, the state law?
I don't know the decimal numbers.
I'm in contact with SHA over some other traffic matters. I can certainly add that to my list.
Would one of the other traffic matters have to do with dedicated turn signals for the light at the center of town?
Yes.
That's good news to me.
So... We will see. I'm just in contact with them. I'll have to go by what they tell me.
And again, not knowing, there probably is no real way to enforce it. But the flip side of the engine braking stopping trucks are some of the local denizens who have their pickup trucks wound up to 100, you know, 110% of engine capacity and go blasting them off at the light right, you know, right at the windows of our house. It's a little difficult on our patrons. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If you would send me a specific email about your concern there, so that I get it right.
Mr. Schaefer teasing us with more. Anyone else have any more comments regarding agenda or non-agenda items before we move on? All right. Very good. We're going to move on where I'll ask the council if they have any conflicts of interest on agenda items for this evening. Council, do you have any?
No, sir.
No, sir.
All right. There are none. Coming up next, we have reception of a delegation, the Sewell property annexation. Be more than happy to entertain your delegation at this time.
Thank you very much for allowing us to be here tonight. Marty Hackett with CLSI Engineering Land Planning Firm in Westminster, representing the Sewell family. Ronnie and Lori Sewell are here, along with Clark Schaefer. We're not planning on any adult stuff here tonight, so.
That's not true. It is age restricted.
That's true, but it's PG rated. Kevin Scott with NVR, Ryan Holmes is also here. And we're here to basically look at their farm, as far as if I may, and I will speak loud enough, I'm sure, to possibly bring this farm in as an annexation to the town, do an active adult community that's very similar to like a Carol Vista product. I just use that because that's something you know how it works and what it's like. Obviously, their property is along Harney Road. Currently, it's the tree farm. I think everybody knows where it's at. I've gosh, bought many trees there myself. The... looking at basically doing a single-family attached and single-family detached dwelling, which is again similar to what you see out there in the rural product. Having, you know, they all have garages and so on, first floor master suites. We're looking at it.
Would it be easier to remove that other poster board from it first? Might give you a little more space. There you go.
Oh, it's locked in there. Thanks, Marty. You want me to talk for you? So again, we're, you know, looking at, you know, a nice grand entrance way, clubhouse, pool facility, you know, all the amenities that you see with activities and so on for the thing. You know, we call it the cruise ship on land when we're doing Carol Vista. Trying to maintain the character of Harney Road. There's a lot of existing nice-sized trees along Harney Road. Preserving most of all those, except for where the entrance is, if it's located in an area where it needs to go. But landscaping along here, trying to keep all the houses relatively back away from the road to keep the scenic, you know, some of the scenic characteristics. And we just thought, you know, trail systems throughout, trying to maintain a lot of open space. There's obviously the main tributary down here, and then we have some other stems that come up into the site, you know, stream buffers. So it maintains a lot of green space. And again, this is only the conceptual, we like to... This is an idea. Sewell would like to have an annex in the city, and we're at the very beginning stages of something. And obviously, it's a lot of time and effort. And, you know, sort of see what, you know, the comfort of the town would be on starting process, really. We're here to answer any questions. Is there anything you want to add? Would you like to see some of the product, like from NVR, you know? Most of the stuff is very similar, I'd say, but you see in these repair rooms, they fill a product that's all.
Do you have renderings of those with you?
I have handouts for you. Is that okay?
Okay. We can accept handouts. Thank you.
So as Marty said, single-family detached versions, as well as detached versions, reasoning behind that.
Thank you.
It's interesting going forward to be that.
All right. And to the council, I ask your review. If you have questions, please feel free to let me know, and we can... I can give you the floor to ask them.
Marty, how many are you talking about? How many homes?
Well, this plan, it shows 320 units total. So around 320. Ultimately, a plan like this would come back in front of the town and do the community concept, community village concept, which is the same as Carol Vista went through the process.
And a reminder, it's the same as Meads Crossing is also a community village.
Hi, Sean.
Sorry, Sean. Well, considering that you'd be at least two years old and three, the best I can give you is where we would be today. And I think your detached would probably be below 300s. The single families would be lower than mid-300s. A way of example, what we're doing in Meads Crossing so far, we're averaging right at 300,000 so far. And we're very happy with what's been going on there with the town, with our reception. I think officially, we've sold 20 homes in the last month. So it's been very successful. We won't keep that pace likely going forward because there's a lot of pent-up demand beginning. But that's kind of the ground we're using. We can be priced a little higher. It's a different market segment we're kind of targeting. Over there, the first time buyers enter, a lot of times aren't even aware they could afford a house. Here, we're looking at kind of the age and place is the new term for 55 and over. The car, either the tires are close to, so add a little more disposable money on.
All right, council, any additional questions for the Sewell party?
So your thought is that you would be attracting new residents to town rather than attracting existing residents to move into this community?
I think it would be a combination of both. But realistically, Tawnytown is still a pretty small town by some of the comparable towns around. We would be pulling likely from Westminster, Baltimore County, Frederick a little bit, I think, to the west. But predominantly, depends your definition of global.
Maybe Howard County too.
Perhaps Howard County, which I also work in Howard. And this age-restricted concept is very popular. The baby boomer generation is very large. And there aren't a lot of these communities available right now, in Howard County especially. So I think we would see some of them from Howard as well.
And is there a particular reason why the rural aspect or characteristic of the area is appealing for a project like this?
The rural there, well, I think it speaks for itself. I mean, it's peaceful. It's quaint. Especially someone that's coming from Baltimore County or from Howard County. And I think the attractiveness for me to this is we provide a lot of facilities internal to the project. But at the same time, they're going to utilize all the services in Tawnytown and surrounding areas. Because we're not doing any commercial. We're not doing any restaurants or shops or anything like that. But they will have their pool, their clubhouse for activities, for scheduled meetings. These folks are going to be helping the local economy.
And on that note, any thoughts about traffic flow, the maximum extent of the population that you would predict being in a community like this, or too soon to say?
At this point, no. At this point, we...
What is... What ends up happening is, is the property right there, part of it, the one side's zone R10, the other side's zoned R20 for medium-density residential in the comp plan. So when you look at that from doing it as a single-family, non-age-restricted community, even though the density to do the amenities and the clubhouse and all that stuff, the density tends to be slightly higher than the conventional zoning, the traffic tends to be a little less when it's all said and done. These people are still... They're 55 and older, so I qualify next year, you know, to have one. And I'm not gonna... I still work, and there's a lot of people that do, and you'll find so. But the thing is, is that when you're looking at traffic, you know, and we have to go through that process. You know, like I said, we're at the very beginning stage. It's, you know, if the town's interested, we would certainly proceed forward with annexations and start the real talks and all that. So... But we obviously have to comply. We know we have to comply with all that stuff.
I mean, are there any existing communities that are at least somewhat similar in nature to this that could potentially be used as an example?
The existing community, like, would be Carol Vista?
Yeah, it is.
Well, I mean elsewhere, other than Carol Vista. And if not, that's okay. I was just curious.
I mean, this is really Carol Vista Part II. I mean, it's gonna be very similar to that.
It will be. The... There's so many other counties that, you know, obviously Carol Vista is probably one of the largest and top senior resident or active adult communities in the county, that's for sure. Some of the other ones you'll find are... Some have multifamily. There is one plan in Eldersburg that has 130 couple lots on it, or units. And again, because of the magnitude of the scale of that, that's only on 21 acres. So based on that, the clubhouse tends to be scaled down. There's no pool, you know. So in order to really make the thing a package where people want to be there and have quality of life and stuff like that, you know, this is maintenance-free for the most part, you know, all the grass and landscaping's taken care of and so on.
So you were... You mentioned boomers, and obviously, this is kind of targeted to that. Boomers are going to be the older range of what you're talking about. You know, your older millennials are about to turn 40 here very shortly. Gen X, you know, between the two is a much smaller generation. What happens when this concept is no longer popular? And now we have two large age-restricted communities, and the idea is not going to resonate anymore. And that could be 10 years down the road. It could be 20 down... 20 years down the road, could be 50. But what happens then? Does the HOA lift the restrictions on age? Does it become...
The HOA doesn't control the restrictions on age. The zoning ordinance for the city of Tawnytown will. So nothing could ever change unless the zoning code changes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to follow your question up, and forgive me if this sounds ignorant. I just don't know. And I don't know if we've seen this in Carol Vista, but in the circumstance where, you know, you have a qualified homeowner who, you know, let's say they pass away, and they want to leave their home to their grandchildren or their children or whatever, and they don't qualify for the age requirement. How does that work? Is there a system in place that takes care of that?
Well, those... If they don't qualify to live there, then they would either sell or rent it.
Okay. Okay. Gotcha. So let's go back to my question again. The city ordinance enforces the restricted age?
In a situation like this, there would be several aspects of the project that would be governed by the city. If we moved forward, we would develop an annexation agreement. That agreement would likely state that the community to be developed would be an age-restricted community. So that's one point.
So with that, we would immediately pigeonhole ourselves? Okay.
Now, that's... The second thing would be on the community village. These would likely be characterized as retirement dwellings. Even though not everyone of that age is going to be retired, there is a section of community village that speaks specifically to that kind of dwelling. So the site plan will most likely also carry some 55 and older restriction. I'm not... I don't think it would have to, but I believe with Carol Vista, that was specified on the site plan as well. So there's a number of ways that it would likely get locked in. Now, if we want an out, so to speak, down the road, should this type of community not be popular any longer? It gets complicated because generally, when we look at this and using Carol Vista as the model, we allocated a smaller amount of water and sewer capacity to each house than is typical for a single-family house. And those numbers have proven to be very true, that the usage is lower in that 55 and older community than in other communities through the city. So we would need to consider things of that nature as well in the event that demographics change to the extent that the 55 and older was not viable any longer. Whether that's going to happen in, you know, 50 years from now or 100 years from now, can't tell you, but...
Right. Well, I mean, one thing to keep in mind, you know, for the council is Carol Vista is a great project, and it's serving us well and will continue to. And this could very well be a great project that serves us as well in the same way. What we need to realize is, at this point, we're doubling down on this of what could be a trend. And that's something that we need to consider as generations move forward. We get into the smaller Gen X generation than millennials who are almost scared of owning a home. You know, we're going to have now two of these developments that are restricted by age. Just something to keep in mind as we continue to explore this.
And I have a question, if I might, following up on what both the mayor and Councilman Haynes had briefly referenced. But you had also referenced that if a homeowner becomes ill or has to... or passes away, you said that they would have the ability to sell or to rent. And if they chose to go ahead and rent out a building, or rent out a unit, what kinds of requirements would there be on that apart from age? I mean, would there be some kind of an income level that they would have to meet? Would it be... Would be any minimum rental rate that they would have to meet? So basically, at that point, it would cease to become a... more or less a community because you would be opening it up to whoever would want to rent it, with the exception of the age requirement, correct?
When you rent it, there is no age requirement.
So there is no... Okay. So then it wouldn't be an age-restricted community?
Please in Tawnytown.
In Carol Vista.
But would that be the case here?
Hang on.
You know, this... See, these are complicated issues. I've dealt with them before because retirement communities have been very popular across the county, starting 20, 30 years ago, mainly driven in the early days by lack of school capacity. And people couldn't develop single families, so they went in for retirement. But... And so I've become somewhat familiar with it. Carroll County's zoning ordinance, unlike yours, says it's exclusively for 55 and older. Your ordinance, I'm looking at your definition in retirement community and or dwelling. Your ordinance says 55 or old, one member of the couple has to... Because I always used to say the county. You mean a 56-year-old can't marry a 54-year-old and live in the same? I mean, that's what your ordinance says. It can't be true. And they're like, well, that's what it says. Yours says one has to be 55 or older. Now, that's totally separate from any rules that the development would have, you know, covenants. But yours would trump because zoning... You can't adopt covenants that are not allowed by the zoning ordinance. So there may be... And usually, what you... To complicate matters further, the federal government has passed regulations and laws, fair housing laws, because... Think of it this way. When you have a 55 and older community, you are by definition discriminating on the basis of age. Because you're telling people, hey, I'd like to buy that place. How old are you? I'm 50. No, we're discriminating against you. You can't buy. So what the federal government has done is they passed laws that said you can discriminate on the basis of age as long as you meet the following criteria. And I don't quote me on this because I'm not expert. It's like 80% of the units have to be 55 and older. You have to have a community center. You have to have rules. And what a lot of these developments, they adopt covenants, condo rules in case of condos, or covenants, HOA documents. And they say things like, if you want to have anybody under 55 in your unit, they can't be there for more than two weeks. You know, again, my grandson needs to live with us. Well, wait a minute. Where's he go to school? Well, he goes to Runnymede. Well, we didn't count that in. We approved your development as a senior unit. We didn't count school capacity. We didn't even do a review for it. So they passed those kind of rules. So it is confusing, but... And then down the road, to answer your question directly, your ordinance would trump everything. And if there were problems, the owners would have to come to you and say, there are problems here. You know, we can't keep these up for 55 and older. Can... Will you change your rules? If you didn't, it would not change. And the rental question is a perennial question. It's very rare for jurisdictions to try to prevent rentals. I don't even know if it's legal. Some condo associations do it, but anybody can rent. It's a private property right. You own a piece of feasible property, you want to rent, you got to comply with the zoning. You can't rent the four families, you know, and all that stuff, and you got to have the setbacks. But anybody can rent. So unless there's a private covenant that would be put in place, which some condo, some groups do, some HOAs do try to do that, say no rentals or rentals based on certain rules, here, there wouldn't be one. They can rent, just like anywhere else in the community.
Thank you very much for that.
All right. Any additional questions from the council for the Sews?
I have a few more. And I know this was mentioned a long time ago, but could you go over again the amenities that are going to be in the development? I know there's going to be a clubhouse. Is there going to be anything else in addition to that?
There will be a pool.
Okay.
They totally talked about some courts, like the new thing out, pickleball. Could be bocce, that kind of stuff, and...
And this open space back here, is that walking trails?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then my next question is with more recent developments, there's been concern with, you know, proper buffering between, you know, the development and other residential areas. And it does seem like that's been accounted for.
Yes, sir.
So can you... Are you able to kind of identify just how far back, you know, that first main street is from Harney Road? And, you know, how many trees are you going to be planting and stuff like that? stuff like that?
This, this whole area here is about 150 to 200 feet back off the road.
Okay.
And then the road, and we had all these houses actually facing, so nobody's looking at the rear of many lots.
Okay.
So it's not like you're not going to see the community.
Yeah.
But as you ride by, you'll see that some of the fronts, but it'll be buffered by the existing trees that are all mature and there's some big trees there along with some infill stuff that's.
Okay. Gotcha. And then my final question is for you all, what is, what is your next step?
Our next step would be based on if the town feels that they're interested in it, then we would start an annexation process.
Okay.
And then from there, then we go into, from the annexation process, then we would come back to the town for the Community Village concept, which is the overlay zone, which allows for the, the, you know, retirement homes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're not going to hear any silliness about park impact fees because these people are not going to be using their parks because I don't buy that. I want them to use our parks. I just want to just be clear about that. I've felt that way for a long time. Louis Siegel came before us in 2000 or what have you about Carol Vista and not going to use your parks and order allocations. And most of that didn't work out, so. I think what you find here, these types of communities, they, you know, they're, they're paying town taxes. Obviously, they pay county taxes. They, normally they have some more disposable income in general. The, the thing is, is that, you know, the amenities are there for the community, but the impact fees and their taxes and all that stuff still go toward the normal things within the town for the town amenities throughout the entire city. I, I, you mentioned Louis. That was a long time ago.
It was.
He's calmed down since he had a stroke about 15 years ago, so. But yeah, that, we, we're still, you know, trying to create the own thing within the own community though, as far as the amenity package. But these people, I mean, they're walking distance to the park and everything else when you think about it, right across 140, so.
Good, good.
Any additional questions from the council? Jim, do you have anything for us?
Just hopefully you can elaborate on this a little bit. From, from a, a meeting I was in, we used the, talked about the Carol Vista model. And if you could maybe elaborate a little bit on that as far as what the HOA maintains going forward, once the project is complete versus what the city accepts as compared to a regular conventional development.
Yeah. And, and that's when I said about they pay full taxes, you know, and they're not, some of the services they get are actually paid for by the condo association because they're paying a condo fee. So the road maintenance, these are private streets. So all the streets that you see in there, the cost of that for any repairs and stuff like that is by the condo association. It's self, it's sort of self-maintained. Snow removal, they pay for. Water and sewer is public, you know, throughout by easements and all that stuff. That's the way it was in, in, in Carol Vista. But the, in this case, obviously the grass and all that stuff's maintained. It's, and again, it's, it's lifestyle, it's quality of life and you're just, you know, it's maintenance free is what it really boils down to. But again, that's alluding to, again, there's segments of, you know, the town doesn't have to plow the snow and, and, and maintain the streets and stuff like that, so. There's, there's a savings, but yet the people are still within the town limits utilizing the town, town facilities as far as whether it's parks, whether it's visiting restaurants and, and everything else.
Trash collection, is that handled privately or by the city? That'll be private as well? Okay. Is Carol Vista private with their? No, you utilize the same trash collection.
The city picks that up?
We do, we do collect in Carol Vista.
Yeah, the city picks it up.
The city picks that up. So they drive one, yeah. So they're on the private streets.
Correct.
My, my mistake.
What you do is up to you.
I was going to say, that doesn't mean that's what you do, but.
That's correct.
The city picks up Carol Vista.
Okay.
Kevin, you don't want to pick up the trash either?
With, with Carol Vista, also the, the association out there maintains their, their stormwater management facilities.
Correct.
So that's something else that's a little bit different with that model than a typical residential development. So again, there's.
Right. There's very little that's handed over to the city in something like this.
Basically water and sewer.
Anything else from the council or staff? Okay. Are you seeking any action from council this evening or can we move into August with any decisions or anything at that point?
We'd like, ultimately, we want to, you know, like some sort of.
You're looking for a blessing for annexation, right?
Annexation, yeah.
Yes, and you can certainly, if you think about it, or you, we want to come back in August for you guys to talk about it and, and let us know if you're interested or not. That's fine as well. I mean, I don't want to sit there and put anybody on the spot.
Right. I understand.
My clients, obviously, I'm telling them, because once you start that process, it's an expensive process. It's a, you know, it's a large project and.
And it's not a fast process either.
Correct. Oh, yeah, yeah. These, these houses, they, they won't show up for a few years.
Is anyone on council interested in blessing further discussion on annexation? Or do you want to wait another month before we do so?
If I might, Mr. Mayor, I would prefer to wait to take this in a little bit more. I'd like to learn a little bit more. And if it's possible, if you have any kind of informational packet or any kind of, of, I don't know what you would call it, documentation about what you'd like to do, I'd like to be able to have that so I could review it, look through it. And if any other questions come up that I could ask, I'd like to, to go ahead and do that. So, so basically not exactly something like this, but maybe something that says, you know, we're going to have these, these many units and this is, you know, the projection for the amount of time we're thinking that this is going to include or, or, you know, whatever the case might be to give us a better idea of what we're looking at.
Well, and a lot of those things are going to be kind of up in the air at this point. I mean, we're almost pre-concept right now. Jay, you look like you have something.
I, I think, let me frame what needs to hap, like what they should be asking for and what you can grant, because you really can't make a motion to do this.
Right.
And it really wouldn't be appropriate if you even made a motion saying, we really want this to be annexed, let's go through the process and then we'll decide, because there's a whole public hearing process. What you really need to do is you're going to direct staff to enter into negotiations for an annexation agreement. I mean, that's really what it is, so that you'll be expending the funds, they'll be expending the funds. And in that agreement, when it comes out to you, because you'll be voting on that, then it'll have the concepts, the parameters. It's not going to get into the things that are, the things you want, meaning how far the house is back and what do they look like. It's going to be more general, but it's going to be the first step that we need to work that out. And then once there's an annexation agreement, then we can start the annexation process, which is where you introduce a resolution, there's a public hearing. And then after that is all completed, so you're still talking months down the road, if you did it very diligently, then the concept plan can start moving forward to all the things. And that would go to the planning commission anyway.
Right.
One of the things that we would figure out, again, we would bring it to you, you wouldn't be required to figure this out, is in the last annexation agreement we did for the property that's over there next to it, the old, well, it's the, the old restaurant, the old Havela Inn property, we actually, in the annexation agreement, talked about how we would grant Community Village and we talked about what it would look like and had somewhat of a concept plan so that if they did it, then this is what happens. And the reason we had to do it with that is to get the county to agree on the five-year zoning waiver, because there's a five-year zoning waiver that needs to be acquired. However, this shouldn't be a problem because I believe it has the, the community designation for future growth already. So the county should be okay with that.
Correct. Actually, Jay, I think it's zoned R20.
Right, so.
It's currently zoned R20.
So there shouldn't be a problem, but you never know.
Never know.
So that, the long and short of it is what you would really be making a consensus decision at your meeting whenever you decide to do this is we want the staff to move forward in good faith negotiations to come up with an annexation agreement.
Correct. So that's kind of what we're looking for tonight. I mean, we're not looking to annex them in next month. It's just whether we want to advise staff to move forward with, you know, are we interested in thinking about this? What is council's consensus on said things?
I think that's a step in the right direction, because I mean, this type of conversation is very bare and I think we want to see numbers and logistics and things like that. As Jay said, we can only get that if we direct staff to open up negotiations. So we can at least do that, I think.
I think they've waited long enough. So I would say, yep.
I agree.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I didn't hear you, Jay.
I think the sewers have waited long enough.
Oh, yeah.
They've waited years for this. I don't see any reason to hold it up any longer.
You have anything additional to say, Councilman Bigliotti?
I, I still would like a little more information. Even if I, you know, consent to moving ahead with this, I want that information as fast as possible.
Well, a lot of that, unfortunately, I'll tell you, won't be available as fast as possible.
Well, I'm, for example, some of the things that we're, I'm sorry?
I said, I think that you'll be kept in the loop is everything.
Right. And Councilman Bigliotti, with all due respect, I think we'll see more of what you want to see should we open up negotiations. I think that'll be.
Right, well, there are a number of things this evening that I was surprised at. For example, when we learned that there were going to be 320 units. This is something I didn't know prior to. And that's the kind of stuff that I just, I want a general idea of it so that when people come and ask me, well, why did you begin, you know, why did you consent to this process beginning? What are they thinking for the kinds of, you know, the number of houses? How big are these houses going to be? What's the price range? Some of the questions we've asked this evening, I'd like to have that general kind of information to be able to give to the people that I serve.
Understood. Yeah, that makes sense.
We should be able to put something together for you specifically on, on that kind of stuff, like a little outline sheet, outlining some of those items.
That would be perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so by consensus, council is advising staff that they can move forward on negotiations for annexation and just simply keep us updated on those processes as they move forward.
Yes.
Anything else from the sewers while you're here?
No, just thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in tonight. All right. Moving backward a little bit, I do want to see if anyone else has anything to say for our public hearing on Ordinance 07-2019 Amendment to Tawny Town Zoning Code. Is there any additional comments for that?
Yes.
All right. When you approach the microphone, please state your name.
My name is Kim Carter. I live in 92 East Main Street, Westminster, but I do have the liquor store. My family owns the liquor store in Tawny Town. And I just want to point out that originally there was some opposition to the liquor store coming into that old Sheetz building. We came before the zoning appeals board and there was so much opposition that they voted no the first time. That decision was appealed by their client, Mr. Schaefer's client. So they came back before the second time, presented the same concept, it's a liquor store. And after a meeting with Mr. Gula, the lawyer, they turned it down. Or they ruled in favor of him so that they could proceed. So I just wanted to let you know, we did not come with opposition and, you know, tonight because we've been there, we've done that, and it doesn't seem to get us far. And as our lawyer told us, we can't fight City Hall. But I do want to let you know that there was opposition at the beginning of this process.
Right.
And that's all I need to say.
Thank you very much. Anything else for the public hearing before I close it? All right. I will close the public hearing at 8:13. Let that be noted in the record. And then we will move forward. Up for adoption this evening is Ordinance 07-2019, the Amendment to the Tawny Town Zoning Code. I'll entertain a motion regarding that.
Motion, do we approve it?
All right. It has been moved that we approve as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
And any discussion from the council? Very good. It's been moved and seconded that we approve Ordinance 07-2019 Amendment to Tawny Town Zoning Code. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And that has passed. Moving on, we have our monthly water allocations. This is Resolution 2019-08, the water allocation for July 2019. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
And do I have a second? Second. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the water allocation for July 2019. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. It has passed as well. Moving forward, Mr. Wyprick, do you have a report to present to us this evening?
Sure. Not a whole lot new this month. We obviously covered the Sewell annexation, no new news on the Syrian property and obviously we just took care of the zoning ordinance. I will have a little bit to add farther down on the agenda when we get to the Chamber of Commerce Energy Co-op.
Okay.
I'd like to speak to that a little bit when we get to that point.
Great. Anything else, sir?
Unless there are questions, I can field.
Do we have questions for Mr. Wyprick? Very good. Are there any questions on the departmental reports that were in your packet for the month?
Jim, I guess maybe you can answer this on the IT report. Number seven. I noticed that the number of units is, are going up where they can't read these water meters. Is that units failing or is that a carryover from before? I don't want to see us get back into that same rut of.
Right.
You know, these, these meters not being able to be read and people having issues with the water bill. But it's, it seems to be going backwards and I was wondering why.
It is, it is cumulative, but the numbers are increasing. So we can, we can redouble our efforts on.
Do we still put that notice on the water bill that we were doing at the time that we need to get in to check your meter?
Yes, but I'll also check and see if we're still doing the, doing the stickers, the door stickers.
Exactly.
That generated, people did not like coming home to the stickers on their door. However, it was effective.
Well, I think we need, I don't want to get back to where we were. We need to do that again.
I'll follow up with the water billing folks.
And even, I mean, at 61, that's not such a large number that we can't be contacting them personally to have this addressed as well. But we don't know if it's actually a failed meter or a failed battery at this point until we go in and look at it, correct?
Right, or just no read. So most likely the battery.
Right.
But we don't know for sure.
Okay.
I'll follow up with finance and make sure that we.
Okay.
Are on top of that.
And Jim, can you remind me very briefly the lifespan of one of those batteries? I think, if, if I remember correctly, I think Henry said it was something like.
15 years was the previous statement. Yeah. And we just got through that first phase, the debacle we went through a couple of years ago. That was that first 15 years. So within the next couple of years, we may be due for another if we don't stay on top of it, so.
Exactly.
Thank you, Mayor Portem Foster, for bringing that up.
Yes.
Any other questions on departmental reports?
Wait, I do have a comment. Okay. The, the baseball tournaments, I, it was brought to my attention that there was a lack of communication as far as getting trash receptacles put up because nobody told the utility guys that we were having tournaments, so they weren't prepared. So how do we go about making sure that there's better communication amongst departments as far as that stuff goes? I mean, you know, is this just a matter of they just need to be told? Somebody needs to just do it or?
I will, I will follow up with our parks director.
I think there was something else. And then also I just wanted to throw it out there again, the, the monies for, for, or from, that we got as far as the, brain. Money's towards Bollinger, that if we can look into the water issues using the money that we had already budgeted. I just wanted to throw that back out there again.
Can you clarify that?
Are you saying that because we received the grant, we use money that's already been budgeted to look into stormwater and all that?
Yeah, there was, there were distances and water issues down at Memorial Park, getting those remedied.
I think as, as far as that goes, that's, that would certainly be a project we could pursue, but I, I think that we really need to start having those conversations about our capital improvement program and, and start tackling that, maybe one department a month or something like that going forward, so that we can really lay out the projects that we want to tackle and, and decide when we want to tackle them. So we, we distributed a draft CIP and a draft capital equipment list back in December. Due to events in the winter, we didn't hold the, uh, the retreat where we would have been talking about those, that CIP draft, to try to figure out if there were more projects we wanted to add, or if we wanted to shuffle things around. So I'd really like to focus on those CIPs and come up with a, with what our six-year plan is. You know, what do we want to focus on first, and try to stay the course of that, rather than kind of just coming up with projects, you know, because we think we've got some money available, or because we got a lot of complaints about this particular thing. I think we need to really develop that program, so that we can look, look ahead budget-wise, and if there might be grant opportunities and things like that, that we have a, have a path to follow to try to get us there.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to move up an agenda item just real quick. I have a quick question for Jim, if that's okay.
Tell me first which item you're talking about.
Uh, just city manager report. I guess it kind of falls in either way.
Okay, well, yeah, if you have a question for Mr. Wyprak regarding that, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm just kind of looking for some knowledge. Something that I heard quite a few times during the election season was the idea of stands in our parks with wastepaper for, for dogs. Have we explored this before? What has the answer been? I mean, can you kind of educate me a little bit on that?
Well, officially, dogs are prohibited from all the parks except for Roberts Mill Park.
Right.
So...
Providing receptacles would encourage them to have animals in the park.
So...
But then again, we're also having a dog show in the park where they're prohibited.
True. So obviously, enforcement of that regulation is kind of lax. I think it's really just invoked when there may be an issue with a particular animal, that, that gives us the ability to go in and, you know, make, have that person leave or take their animal out of the park. We certainly could be more stringent about it. I'm sure there'd be some, some pushback if we were to step up enforcement on that. And frankly, I'm not sure what exactly we would do as far as stepping up enforcement. I don't know. I would imagine that folks are bringing their pets to the park typically outside of normal business hours, so it's not like we can have the parks director make a circuit of the parks every hour, or something like that, as, as if he had time to do that, but... So, but as far as the, uh, the little stands with the bags, you know, that's something we could certainly look into, I would think, for Roberts Mill Park, where officially they're allowed.
Also with Bollinger, since there's going to be walking trails, I would assume people are going to bring their dog.
We haven't established rules for Bollinger Park as yet, that I know of, so that would be an area that might be...
I just wanted to bring this up, kind of...
Well, I think future discussion on how we wish to accommodate pets in all of the parks. Because even if it's not pets necessarily, there are animals that would have to be permitted in the park and having that... And even then, I mean, it's, we need to consider how appropriate it is that we ban pets from our public parks.
Especially when we're using those parks for things like parades and terrier trials.
Or terrier trials or things like that. So maybe the bigger discussion we need to have is our accommodations and rules regarding pets in our parks.
Agreed. And, and Mr. Mayor, I believe, I believe it may have been you about a year or two ago who brought up a, brought up the idea of signs in the parks urging owners to clean up after their pets after, I think, I think, was it baseball field?
Well, the, the specific was that they were not to be fenced in sports fields. Because what they'd like to do is put them in the field, close the gate, just let the pets run wild on the football field, the baseball fields, and that really did more harm than good. And those signs are in place now. How effective are they? Use your imagination. But I think we do need the larger, the broader discussion of accommodating pets. So we'll add that to a list of things to discuss in the future. Any additional questions before we move on to the legal report? Mr. Gula, can you provide a legal report this evening?
Yeah, a lot of things happening this month, but two that need your attention, because they're going to be coming back to you in the next couple of months. The first is that the city's been approached by the Carroll County State's Attorney's Office through the Police Department to be part of the coalition that will take eligibility for a grant that was awarded from the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention. And it was rewarded to the State's Attorney's Office. And what they're doing is they're getting a coalition of all the police forces, basically, the other agencies too, but all the police forces to participate in the Maryland Criminal Intelligence Network. So this is kind of like intelligence, like, you know, the Central Intelligence Agency and intelligence network of police officers that basically would come up with a system to primarily, primarily fight organized crime, but that's not like the mafia organized crime. So like gangs, criminal drug networks, things that basically aren't just the speeders on the street. And so we've reviewed the MOU. It's going to need your action, but since it was just finalized today, we're really going to wait till next month. But the idea is it's been reviewed, it's pretty much straightforward. It's about information sharing. It doesn't cost personnel or money or anything like that, but it's about information and how we keep it confidential and things like that. So it's going to be provided in your package for next month, and you can take action on it next month. But it's a positive thing to do.
Right. I mean, it, it does task our city police department with providing information, which is a great thing. But at the same time, it opens up a lot of resources that they would have access to. If they make an arrest and there's a certain symbol tattooed on someone's body, they would have that central database they could access for that information.
So we don't want to be the people that aren't doing it, so that's an important thing to remember. Okay, second item is, is more for your information, but as you know, the Frazier appeal that goes going to the Court of Appeals is going to be decided, or heard at least. It might not be decided then, but heard in October. The date's still up in the air, but it's in the October term. So there's a briefing schedule that has to happen, where the appellant, which is the Fraziers, have to file a brief with the court and with us, and then the appellee, which is us, have an opportunity to respond, and then there's an opportunity for them to rebut. And that's typically about the argument that's going on. And the case is framed, meaning the issue is framed. It's not simple as to say who wins or loses, okay? Because we already know we won every time. But the Court of Appeals deals with issues, meaning the appellant has to frame an issue that it feels that the court should hear, and they did that when they asked for CERT, when they asked for search arroary. And so the issue, in general speaking, is whether or not attorney's fees and costs should be granted for willful violations of the Open Meetings Act, and then what consists of a willful violation. Because you recall, the argument they made is if you're trained, you should know, so therefore, if you make a violation, it's willful. So that, that's the logic train. Okay, so that has obviously not just importance to us about how our case is decided, but how the Court of Appeals decides this case sets the law of the land for Maryland. So it affects going forward everyone on that. You've heard that before, where people, attorneys have stood up here and said, "The Court of Appeals decided", well, that's, so this is a big deal. And it can't be treated lightly, even though that we have, you know, said we've won several times over. You, you got to defend to your maximum extent every time. So that sets the background to this. What we, the city, are going to do, and we're going to get the mayor to do it for us, is we want the Maryland Municipal League to get involved through what's called an amicus brief. I'm throwing lots of Latin at you, but amicus is Latin for a friend of the court, okay? So an amicus brief is filed when a party that is not the plaintiff or the defendant feels that it's such an important case, either one way or the other, that they get involved and they file a brief that explains their position. And it's usually done on global issues, like this. So you can imagine the way I framed the issue for you just now. The Maryland Municipal League would be very interested on behalf of its people, because all municipal governments, county governments, all those people would be affected by this decision, one way or the other, whichever way it happens. So there's a policy by which the Maryland Municipal League does this. It's just not something you write them a letter and say, "Do it". You have to write them a letter, you pay a fee. There's an attorney's group that's selected that reviews the issue. Then the Maryland Municipal League Board or Executive Committee make a decision to say, "Hey, we want this to happen", and then the attorney's group that is selected, they actually write the brief. So it's not us. They write the brief and they file it. They also have a chance to argue it too, sometimes. All that being said, it requires the city to ask. And that's what we're saying, is that, you know, we want you to agree to do that. And we figured that's pretty an obvious thing that you'd want to do. And we're going to want the mayor to sign the letter once it's prepared to happen. So you don't necessarily have to take any action unless you're completely opposed to that, but this is in our best interest on behalf of our colleagues. It helps our case, but it's on behalf of municipal government too. So we're going to try to make the timelines necessary to make that happen.
Are there any objections from the council on that course of action?
This has my full support.
I have no objections, but I'm just curious. Are there any cons to the MML getting involved?
Not, it costs us $500, I think.
Okay.
That's it, yeah.
That's a con.
Yeah, right.
I mean, yeah, it costs, it costs something, but no, there's no...
Okay.
They, they may not get involved. I mean, there are cases where they haven't gotten involved, but you have to at least ask.
Okay.
All right, hearing nothing else?
And I don't have any, um, other major items that need to be discussed tonight, and we'll pick up after, now the holidays are over, we'll pick up in August with the normal business.
All right. Any questions for Jay from his legal report or other legal issues while we're there? All right, we shall move forward into our new business here. First up is the approval of the monthly financial report. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded to approve the monthly financial report. Any discussion? Very good. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Outstanding. Let's carry on to our accounts payable. I will again search for a motion to approve the accounts payable. And do I have a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the accounts payables. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. Very good. Moving on to item number three, Chamber of Commerce Energy Co-op. I'm going to throw that over to Mr. Wyprak for some information on that.
Okay. This is item number four in the Department of Public Works' report this month. So we have a contract for energy through the Chamber of Commerce. That's how we got started with this, through CQI. We realize significant savings by using, using them. They're basically our broker for electricity. We, Barry, Kevin Smeeck and I, our treasurer, public works director and myself, met with CQI last month, and they have offered to extend our contract. We still have another year in the contract, but there are some regulatory changes that are going to affect the industry, and it is anticipated that costs are going to increase dramatically. If we are under contract by August, we have the ability to avoid some ancillary charges and benefit from rates closer to what we have now. Rates unfortunately are, change very frequently. So we can't, we don't have a rate today that we can provide for you that is going to be good a week from now. So what we're seeking is authority to extend our contract with, with CQI and try to protect our, our rate as best we can for an additional three years. Rather, our, our contract, our current contract is up in, in a year. So we should be, if we can extend it with, through CQI, we can at least delay some of that increase. It's, it's coming, but we can delay it a little bit more if we can extend the contract.
Are there any amendments to the contract right now, or are we just looking to extend it as it is?
It would have, it would have new rates added in, but otherwise, it will be as is, just extending the time period.
Okay.
I can't hear you. I was saying, when you say three years, is that including the year that we still have, or is that on top of the year that we already have still? So it's four years? Okay, I was just, I was just wondering. Okay.
We, we have a, CQI had just contacted us this afternoon, asking if we could meet them on Wednesday, where they'll share all the current...
Sounds like four years, but you can't be sure.
Right.
I can clarify that tomorrow and email everybody. But the meeting is hopefully going to be held on Wednesday, where we'll get all the, the rate detail and apparently the...
Are they expecting you to sign when you have that meeting, or...
Apparently, rates are good for an 18-hour window. So what we're looking for is to be able to meet with them, evaluate the rates with the treasurer and public works director, and lock it in if, if the rates look to be advantageous for us.
On that, I'd like to entertain a motion to give city staff discretion to sign that if they find the rates are to their liking.
I'll make that motion.
All right, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All right, it's been seconded, excuse me, moved and seconded to give city staff discretion on signing that agreement. Any discussion further on that?
No, Diane, please, go ahead.
Now, Jim, what's going to be the process if you enter into this and you decide there are too much? Then you got to start searching for other? Or do you have something in mind?
If we decide not to extend, we're still under contract with CQI for a year.
Yeah. So during that period, you would look, okay.
We would need to start shopping. So, but I, I anticipate that what they are going to put on the table for us is probably going to be...
Very competitive.
A better deal than what we're likely to find on our...
Okay. I'm just wondering, what do you have at this point to compare it to?
We have, right, our current, our current bills that are not through, all of our electric is not through CQI.
Okay, okay.
So we have other rates that we can compare it to.
Okay.
Councilman Vigliotti, did you have a question?
And Jim, it's completely okay if you don't have the answer to this. I'd certainly like to find out about it. If by delaying this for, or extending it for three years, that doesn't mean that we're going to be hit with, you know, say, twice as many fees when that three years is up. Like, just because we're delaying, it doesn't mean that we're not going to get hit twice as hard or something, and...
Understood. I'll, that's a, that's a good point. I'll make sure that we investigate that before we move forward.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm good.
Okay. If there are any additional concerns that you have that may pop up tonight, tomorrow, please direct them to Mr. Wyprak for his consideration or answers. Otherwise, all in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Very good. Mr. Wyprak, you have your marching orders then?
Good, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Up next, city manager search allowance. Mayor Portem Foster and I met with David Deutsch, who was discussed late last year, early this year, that that's how the council would move forward with the city manager search. He provided us with a proposal on how this will go, and then also a schedule of fees. Therefore, we have chosen to come to council and ask for an allowance of $30,000 for this process to search for a new city manager. And I'll ask for a motion to approve that if someone feels so inclined.
I'm sorry, sorry. So the mayor and council agreed that this is the process it's going to take?
The previous council, it was discussed that we would contract the services of essentially a headhunter. David Deutsch is one who's done work for Westminster, and I think he did some work for Sykesville, as well as other municipalities around the state. He's very well-versed in this sort of a process. He himself has a lot of city manager experience. Then also finding him, it would be a nationwide search, not simply Carroll County Times, it would be nationwide.
So should this allocation be made, where will the money be coming from?
That's something we need to discuss, is, is where we would take it from.
Can we discuss that first?
We can. Who would like to speak to that at this point? I mean, it's not budgeted at the moment, so we do have...
Well, let me, let me ask this before we get into that. How, how, when the allocation is made, do you need the money immediately?
We would like to begin the search as soon as possible. Now, he is out of the country until July 11th, I believe.
You said there's a schedule of fees, so, you know, obviously, you're not spending it all at once. But how, the first fee, for example, how soon is that?
I'll get you that information while we discuss further.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, under, under this plan, who's making the decision to hire a city manager?
Well, the decision will ultimately be made by council from my nomination. Mayor Portem Foster will be working very closely with me on that process, the interviews and all of those things, before it comes to the council. Mayor Portem Foster, if you have anything to add?
Maybe it would be helpful to share with the council the entire proposal that we have that lays out exactly what Mr. Deutsch will do, how... that lays out exactly what Mr. Deutsch will do, how the process will work.
I think that.
There are some changes to that that we need to make before, remember, we had some changes wanted to request of that before we did that. So he's not in the country right now.
Well, he's not even here now, so it's not gonna start until he gets back.
Correct.
But they, the changes were minor. We can share the process with the council, how it will work.
That's correct. Let me just pull it up here real quick.
And, uh, on, on the note of the fee, the $35,000.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand, I'm sorry. So the $30,000 request, uh, how i- is that comparable to, I mean, what does that mean in comparison to other?
Let me share with you what that would cover.
That's why I want you to share with them.
So what that would cover is, let's pull this up. There. Fees which would cover position analysis, outreach campaign, resume review, candidate screening, background investigations, interview process, negotiation and follow-up. Comes out to $19,500. There are also expenses for consultant travel, lodging per diem, correspondence, advertising, research, uh, things like that, around $5,000. And then we add a little bit extra in case there's a candidate that we felt the need to bring in, uh, who may not be local for an interview.
So this is just payment for the labor of consulting?
A portion of it is, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Well, gang, I'm, I'm not a fan. This isn't what I, um, I did not know this is a, um, a plan of the previous mayor and council. You know, I don't wanna. I'm pretty sure that Jim Wyprak has done the job we asked him to do, not for six months, not for eight months, not for ten months, but my God, eighteen, seven months, nineteen months. It's a long time to sort of wing something, and I don't know how much more we'd need. Myself, and again, this is what I'm bringing on, and I, I totally, totally feel this is, um, um, a lot of money to spend on, on this process, I really do. It's, it's, it's a crazy amount of money. It's a third of the city manager's income. You know, um, that's just my take on it.
Okay, well, I appreciate your take. I, I don't find it to be a huge amount of money to find the best person to manage the city on a daily basis. I mean, we are looking for a very specific thing that we want for the city.
Something that we do have to be prepared for, however, um, is the circumstance in which we spend this $30,000, and then after a thorough search of candidates, what if we end up hiring Jim?
Then that's what we find. If we find that he is the best qualified, then we have the answer to the question. But it is our duty for the city to make sure that we are 100% sure that who we hire is the best person for the city.
I understand.
I think if we rob ourselves of that search to find that person, and having someone with the experience to help us do so.
Right.
Because we don't have the time or resources to do what Mr. Deutsch can do.
Right.
This is what he does.
When it comes to conducting interviews, um, I want to assume that, that you and Mayor Portem Foster will also be involved in every single interview.
That's correct, yes.
To what extent is council involved during that process? I understand that a nomination.
You receive a nomination.
So prior to that, will we also be kept in the loop with resumes and applications and things like that, or no?
Not so much, no.
That's what he does.
Correct.
Okay.
And if I may say so on the record as well, you know, alluding to what I had asked before about whether or not the $30,000 is comparable, I, you know, myself also express concern about, you know, the amount of money. I understand that there's a process involved. I understand that we wanna try to find the best possible candidate for this job. I mean, it's no secret that, you know, I, I believe that, that Jim, you know, Jim has my support. I think he's done very, a very good job for the last, you know, year and a half, two years that we've had him. Yeah, I personally, I really don't feel that, you know, $30,000 is an amount worth spending in pursuit of this at this point. I mean, the city has been functioning very well under Jim. We've been getting along very well. Um, and then I just, I personally, I really don't see the need to, to pursue this.
Councilmember Fuller, I'd like to know, uh, how, like, are you comfortable with, with how the process has been lined out?
My, I guess my question would be, any monies that are not utilized, will they be returned?
Of course, yeah, I mean, that'll.
Is there a way to cut any of the corners on any of those costs? I'm just adding.
If there's a method of recoup, I think.
In terms of money paid to him, um, it's gonna be based on invoices. You know, he'll submit invoices for what they do, expenses as they go on. You, the, any extra that we may need to bring in applicants, you know, we'll try to do as, hopefully avoid, but keep as inexpensive as possible to make that happen. Obviously trying to utilize things like, uh, video conferencing or something like that for interviews. We're taking the step, if they are particularly great and they're not local, then it is intelligent to bring them here to actually let them see the city and answer our questions face to face.
But again, Mr. Mayor, that process, process would be done by you and, um, Mayor Portem, correct?
And the consultant, yes.
Does the mayor, does the city manager still serve the pleasure of mayor and council?
Yes.
Okay, then I think we should be part of who is, um, interviewed. I'm a hiring manager. I've got, I've got thirty years in the big city.
I understand.
And I do it very well.
I understand.
Sometimes I get bamboozled, but it happens. But it's, normally it's who, who has the institutional knowledge. That's a huge impact. That's a hit to ground running. It's not to Jim's, I don't want to embarrass you, Jim, but, um, at the last city council meeting, um, Jim, Jim responded to a zoning question that was so, um, in-depth that I don't care who you bring in here, PhD in, in zoning, they will not be able to walk through and get that task accomplished correctly, to the best knowledge of, of, in my opinion, this mayor and council. I think we got, um, a very strong candidate, um, in our room.
Oh, and I mean, no one's denying his zoning knowledge.
I'm talking, I'm talking the whole, is it, how about zoning and him being city manager?
Well, that's two different things there, that's why.
I understand that.
Right.
I just, I don't, I just think it's a lot unusual that mayor and council made that kind of decision rolling forward knowing that there was an election gonna be in May, I just.
Well, and that's why we, it was decided to wait until after the election to begin that process.
That, yeah, the process that is agreed upon before, not the process of hiring a city manager. That's, that's too.
Both, well, it, it was both. It was decided at the time that we would meet with Mr. Deutsch and discuss his services. If we decided to go forward, then we would come to council for approval to do so. So that's why we met with him, we got his fees, and we're here to discuss accordingly. So I'm asking that we move forward with that. I believe Mayor Portem Foster is in agreeance with that. Am I correct?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to suggest that, um, once the other members of council have received, uh, the process that Mr. Deutsch outlined for you all, if we're able to kind of digest that, and then maybe move on this in August, I think that'd be a much more amicable way to go about this. In addition to that, I think there are some objections to the minimal extent in which council is involved. I mean, this is a very senior position of staff, and so I do hear, uh, Councilman, Councilman Hale, when he says that he'd like to see a little more involvement from the council, and I think at the very least, being kept in the loop of, of who's applied and what resumes have been submitted. I understand the point that, you know, that's Mr. Deutsch's job, um, but, you know, I think that there's, you know, some, a little more that could be done, so.
Mayor Portem Foster, would you like to, to address that? We, we discuss it at quite length, quite frankly.
You don't hire a headhunter to do the work yourself. And that's what Mr. Deutsch is.
Okay.
He will do the work that we don't have time or resources or expertise to do.
Okay.
He will present us with the best qualified, of which, um, the mayor and I will look at and bring forward to council.
Okay. Something else I want to say specifically, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Let's, okay, we're doing a nationwide search.
Right.
We don't have time for the five of us to weed through 100 applications.
You're right.
And start nitpicking, well, I like this, I don't like that. I mean, we just don't have time for that.
Yeah.
Mr. Deutsch has presented us with a timetable. That's correct, isn't it?
He estimates approximately four months.
Four months for this, for the entire process. Like the mayor said, this is a process we agreed on, we agreed to move forward with.
To explore.
To explore on the last council. And then after the council was seated, to move forward.
Okay.
Which is what we're doing. He estimates four months. You wanna wait until August? That's pushing it up.
Understood.
Another month.
Understood.
Jim is welcome to apply for the position, just like everybody else. If he rises to the top of the pile, he will be hired.
Right.
And then we know for sure that the person we have in that position is the best person for it.
We just felt like, at this point in time, Tawney Town is not, is no longer a little town of a few thousand people. This is a big business we run.
Right.
We want to get the best candidate, I think.
Understood. Something I'd like to say.
We don't know what's out there.
Right. To address, uh, Councilman Hale, your concerns, um, another way to look at it is, I mean, we're not gonna really lose Jim. I mean, he would just, assuming we hire another candidate, um, whatever deficiencies in knowledge there are, Jim will be present for. And he will continue as the zoning administrator, and so there is obviously gonna be a learning curve in understanding Tawney Town. Let's say we hire someone from Washington State, you know, but, um, those deficiencies will be taken care of.
Well, they're gonna be addressed, but it'd be, if you're, if, if I apply for your job and get it, are you still gonna be the happy guy that you are? Are you gonna be able to motivate, um, on a daily basis yourself and then your own new staff? I mean, again, you guys have a, have a system made, a decision made to hire this consultant, and, and I agree, Diane. I remember years ago, ninety-one candidates for, you know, and it's just my number. I think we both, I think we pretty much, all right, this is a thick one, you know, this is. But, um, yeah, it, it, don't, you know, I just, I don't, I don't like this process. You know, I, I respect, you know, all the things that I've read about you, um, the boards that you've been on and the big monies you've controlled and that type of thing. And Brad, you're doing great things too. But I don't think that, I think it's a mayor and council decision, not this consultant, and then the mayor and, and Mayor Portem. This, I, I don't think that's the right way to go. I think in all fairness, the people that were elected here, were elected here, and we should be part of that decision.
And you will be the ultimate decision.
Not, not the cut, but the candidates.
So you're saying you do want to see all of these applicants?
No, no, what I'm saying is, after, after the gentleman, um, brings forth the, um, if, if you guys go that way, and again, I'm, I'm against spending, spending money for this process. I, I don't think it's necessary. I just fully, fully believe that Jim is a viable candidate for this job, and I don't know, I don't know what else. Can anybody articulate what more you want from, um, another city manager?
Well, if I may add to Councilman Hale, um, especially over the last few months, and I don't know whether it just happened to be this particular spring and summer, or what the case was, but I've had a, uh, I guess you could call it a record number of residents reach out to me with particular concerns. As, as an example of one, uh, the amount of, of, uh, trash and litter on a neighboring property. And, uh, the individual who was concerned about the amount of, of trash buildup, uh, you know, was asking questions where you had to go back, uh, you know, to the property owner and to who was renting before this guy, and then, you know, as Councilman Hale was talking about, you know, Jim's institutional knowledge, his, his memory, his understanding of these things, right, is crucial. And, and while, yes, you know, you might still have him around to address, I think as Councilman Hale said, quote deficiencies or, or problems, uh, or gaps in that knowledge, there's also, to Councilman Hale's point, the, the concern that, you know, we don't, if Jim doesn't end up being city manager, what's to stop him from taking a job somewhere else? And then we lose all of that. I mean, I, I certainly don't have that same kind, I mean, he lives a block down the road here, you know, it, he has the kind of local knowledge that I wish that I had. And I think he is an absolute blessing to us, right? And I know that we consented to at least exploring the idea of a headhunter, but that was several months ago. And, and again, you know, as I've made no secret that I believe that Jim is the guy for this job, and that I think that, you know, $30,000 is, is a lot of money, and, uh, I just, I can't support this.
Something I want to ask you, Councilman Hale, is, um, would you be comfortable approving this allocation of funds, um, if we agreed to make sure the council was a little more involved in the hiring process? Perhaps we're privy to interviews or things like that?
No, if we, if we didn't have the talent we have sitting over there to my, to my right, I, I would, I would, um, I, I just don't, I just think Jim's a viable candidate, and I don't think, do we need to spend $30,000? I'd love, Diane, I love the idea that we're not going through, I mean, I'm not kidding you, that one, I, I believe it's ninety-one resumes and people from all over the nation. And in that process of hiring strangers, free and quick succession did not work out. To the detriment of the city, huge, huge. We lost other employees because of, we went outside the box. And that, that's, you know.
I, I do want to offer a flip side to this. I think regardless of what we decide to do, the issue does not go away. Because if, let's say, in a scenario where we just decide unanimously to approve Mr. Wyprak's city manager, we have to hire another zoning administrator. And, I mean, would we not want to go through a similar process that we're going through now?
No.
That, that wouldn't be a national search.
Okay.
That's a little more specific to the region, if not the state specifically, in terms of those things.
Understood.
I maintain this is the appropriate process we need to take for this position.
Well, and, all right, I'll just throw it out there. I'm not saying I don't think Jim isn't the best person for it, but I think we're setting a precedence that we really need to stick with a way to do this. And so, and I'm not saying, even if it were, what, $24,500, if we don't need the extra whatever, split into four months, it's $6,000. I can make that if I work my ass off. It, it's, he's doing a job. He's doing a job. He's finding the best candidates. It serves a purpose. I think we owe it to the town.
Absolutely.
To follow through with doing our due diligence. You know, and I'm not saying that I wouldn't be interested in seeing, say, you know, the top five, just to see what, what we got, just to see who, who showed up for the, for the job. And again, I'm not saying that Jim's not the best, but I, to me, it would make Jim feel better to know that, instead of thinking that we just said, we've got Jim, let's just stick with Jim. You know, and, and I do, the money is a little, it's a little higher than I expected.
It's a little lower than I expected, actually. For some reason, I was expecting $50,000. Let me, let me share with you some guarantees that are in here, and you'll see it when I get this, um, to the point where I'll share it with you. Guarantees, number one, we'll keep working until placement is made. Number two, not recruit the placement for other positions without your permission, so it's not like he's gonna then take this guy from us, or, or girl, whichever. Three, we'll, we will not recruit any of your staff for two years from the date of the placement without your permission. And four, if the selected candidate leaves your employ within the first two years, we will redo the search for expenses only. So if it's not a fit and they leave, they'll come back and do the search again. All we pay for are the expenses for that particular search, not the actual $19,500 in fees. So those are some things to keep in mind as you consider this. But I think we owe it to the city that we do our due diligence on this, that we find the absolute best candidate, that we walk out of here and say, you know, Jim was the best candidate, it is him, or it is so-and-so from elsewhere. But we really need to make sure we have the best person to move this city forward. As Mayor Portem Foster said, we're not a small town anymore.
Uh, to echo the mayor's words and to echo your words, Councilwoman Fuller, I think the ma, I, I understand that this is, you know, a tough dollar amount to bite, and I do still want to have a discussion about where that money is coming from, because I think that's important. But what will the perception be if we don't open up this process? That's not gonna help the narrative on the streets that there's a good old boys' network. If we don't open up the hiring process, if we're not transparent about this, and if we don't, you know, take into, you know, just, just go through the general run like we would with any other staff position.
Sir, my thing is this, it's not like Jim's a three-year employee. He, he left big business to come here, because he care, he believed in the city. I don't know if Jim's known name or his favorite color, but what I do know is this, um, I don't worry about the city, um, with respect to the job that he does. And I agree, we, we need to give the city the best city manager, um, possible. But we're, I think for, we're $30,000 to the good. I think we've already found him. So when you, and with, with respect to what the citizens. So when you, and with, with respect to what the citizens think, that's important. When I was out campaigning, I asked every question you could think of. You know, I had big, I had a big hills run up, you know, I had three members of the city council endorsing you, and another gentleman. And, and all good candidates. But I had to answer questions, you know, and I interviewed city staff, a lot of city staff, talked to them, what's good, what's bad. I'm not hearing many things about the boss being a bad guy. He's not soft either. When I get a planning zoning book, I started that back in September of last year. It had Jim's touch all over it. I mean, it's just Jim, your staff puts together the nicest, nicest stuff. Well, yes, it's all there, it's everything you need. You can just walk in there, brand new off the street like Barry did, and just open the bolt, the folder, just like these books right here. So again, I, it's not about finding the best city manager. I think we have a super candidate right here in our room. Period.
And Councilman Haynes, to your point, it wouldn't be just a closed process. We wouldn't, you know, wouldn't just be, well, we're not even gonna advertise for the position. If I'm correct, we will be advertising for the position regardless as to the headhunter, right?
Well, that's the point of going this process, I mean.
But we, it wouldn't be like, you know, we would turn around tomorrow and say, okay, we're gonna hire employee X to be the new city manager, and exclude anybody else from it, period. You, you would still be taking in applications, you know, I believe you said you had ninety-one applications
I mean, if, if the council decides we're not going to do this, you're saying then we would advertise?
Right.
Then you got our limited staff and resources doing the work.
And I think it's the difference between putting the bid out in our neighborhood as opposed to.
Nationwide.
Right.
And if I'm, I apologize.
No, and I get what you're saying. I totally, and like I said before, you know, Jim's just been doing a fantastic job. And I would not, you know, want to take away from everything that he has done for the city. But I think that it's our responsibility to make sure that it's done properly, and that, you know, that we follow this, this, you know, agenda.
Like I said, do our due diligence.
Yeah, I mean, just.
To get the best candidate that we can.
And it might be, Jim. You know, there's a very good chance. We may only get, you know, three people, God forbid, that, that apply.
But, yeah.
For whatever reason. But, you know, it, it just, it, it would be up to us to make sure that we put it out there the best way that we can, just to serve everyone.
That's, that's, that's an approach, sure. But, you know, ju, just one more thing. You gotta worry about the, the other employees. Years ago, we, we got four police officers retirement. Huge tenure for, for the next decade. I don't, I don't know that we lost maybe an officer or two. Then we got our city employees retirement. Guess what? Can't get rid of them. You know, they're, they're here. A lot, a lot of our employees have retired. It's a good thing, all right? I don't have retirement at my organization. All right? Myself, there's some other things, but I don't, we don't have retirement per se. I believe it has an American, American experience. But also, what do we say to our other employees that have time here? Don't hang around here, because here's what's gonna happen. We're gonna spend thirty thousand dollars of money to look for the boss's job. You, you, we have to think about the, the other employees here too.
Well, no, right, but I think we're telling them.
I feel like that's a stretch.
We're not placing him.
We don't have that many positions that we would be at, at that level.
Maybe so.
You know, it's, when you look at other departments like Public Works, or even the Police Department, where there is a almost a chain of command, you have an Assistant Director of Public Works, things like that. We don't have that for city manager. City manager is something where, you know, there are degrees in this sort of a job. You know, it's a specialized thing. And I'm not saying that Mr. White doesn't have advantages in that position. He is filling that void for us while still being our zoning administrator. It's not, you know, that he was, you know, the assistant city manager, and he was going to ascend the throne once it became available. It's a very different position, and that's why we need to handle it differently. This is essentially, you know, one of the two most important staff positions in the city, and we need to make sure that we can walk out of here and say, we did the best we could in finding the best person for this job. And the nomination that I bring you will be what I believe, and Mayor Portman Foster will, you know, be in, in agreement with me, that is the best person for this job. Whether it's Jim, or whether it's someone from Nevada or Alaska. It's whatever.
Or down the street, as Mr. Deutsch said.
A follow-up question to that, is there any difference in cost in the circumstance that council does not agree with the nomination? For whatever reason?
Well, they're gonna continue the search until we hire somebody.
Okay. So I want to have that conversation about cost and where that money is gonna come from. I mean, are we gonna take this out of our savings? I mean, what?
Well, yeah, I mean, essentially, it's not in the budget, so we'll come out of our savings. Thirty thousand dollars is a very small amount.
At this point, you've, you've just started the fiscal year, so I don't have the budget in front of me. But I would, I would think you would be looking at Mayor and Council Professional Services, as the line items would come from. If you have thirty thousand in there, it, it's there to start the process. You'll obviously run short as the year goes on, and we'll be looking at doing a budget amendment to replenish that line item. Now, where the, where the money from that comes from will depend upon where we are at that point in the year. If we've exceeded our revenue projections by that point, we may not have to pull from fund balance. But we won't know until we get to that point. So, and as I said, I don't know without looking at the budget if, if there's thirty thousand dollars in Mayor and Council Professional Services. There, there may be, maybe Brad can pull it up real quick. While you're looking at it, there, there is something I would like to, to discuss a little further, apart from the finances. Councilman Hale made, I think, a very salient point about the idea of loyalty toward the employees who serve cities. Now, this idea that you promote from within is actually a very American concept that grew out of the age of industry with Andrew Carnegie and Rockefeller finding that they had people who were well-qualified to run their businesses because these people worked the businesses from the ground floor up. And, you know, this idea that just because there isn't, you know, like a step-by-step process to becoming, you know, city manager, that has nothing to say that, that, you know, if I am, you know, the clerk or the treasurer, or, or if you end up hiring, if we decide to hire like a full-time janitor at some point, right? You know, that, you have that percept, perception that, you know, first of all, this is a town that you love, right? And I want to serve the town that I love, but why would I serve the town that I love if there's no loyalty and, and, you know, advert, you know, consequently, or, I'm sorry, adversely, if I am someone from another town and I come in here, how are we able to prevent somebody from, as was alluded to earlier, that this is just like a checkmark on their resume as they try to move to a higher position? Because I know in years past, in decades past, we've had cons, we've had issues with police officers who would come in, they'd be here for a year or two because they were just waiting for a better job somewhere else. And yes, I can come in and I can say, oh, this is where I want to be for the next five years, but if a neighboring city offers me, you know, twice as much money, I'm out of here. You know? And if, you know, we do not demonstrate a sense of loyalty toward our employees, because, I mean, they're doing the day-to-day stuff. We, you know, they, they hear citizen complaints just as much as we do, right? You know, we, we're the ones who, we are making the decisions here. And, you know, we are the ones who effectively oversee the organization, and that loyalty begins at the very, very top. And we want people who are going to be engaged with the city, who are loving the city that they're working for and loving the people that they are, because as everybody knows, you know, this is not, you know, this is something that we love to do as council members, right, to serve the city, but it's not an easy thing either. It takes a lot of our time, it takes a lot of our effort. It's well worth it, absolutely. But, you know, it's, it's something that requires a serious love and passion and commitment. And so I just, I want to offer that up just as, as, you know, food for thought, because, you know, that is very important. Again, you know, even if there is no, you know, hierarchical step-by-step progression to a, to an upper position, you know, again, even down to any potential janitors that we may hire, we want people to love being a part of this and to feel that, that, you know, they're a part of something and they're being taken care of. Because again, you know, public service is not, you know, this is not a common job.
Well, and I would, I would say that I, that's probably gonna be one of the factors that they're doing as they do the hiring. If they see Jim's resume, they're gonna be like, we know this guy. So, you know, he's gonna have that up. But I'm, again, we're not replacing Jim. This city would be shooting itself in the foot to lose him.
Agreed.
So I would say regardless of what happens, our utmost important number one priority would be to take care of him. You know, and, and whether he goes back to doing zoning, or we give him more responsibility, or if there's somebody who does, you know, beat him out qualification-wise, well, then we work to get him to the point where when that guy's gone, then Jim takes over. But we have to make it worthwhile for him too, right? So, again, we're not.
Worthwhile for Jim, right.
Yeah. I mean, God forbid, we do not want him to go anywhere, because he does have all of those qualifications. You know, he does have a love for the city and the knowledge and the, and the time and the effort.
So, yes.
If somebody were to come in that had something else that we thought would be better for the city right now, that doesn't discount him later. I mean, it's not like he's gonna be like.
Well, then with all due respect, why wouldn't we just do a search again later? If the first candidate didn't work out, why wouldn't we commit to a second search? And then on that note, right, of love.
I'm, I'm, you confused me.
Okay. So, okay, so let's say we hire candidate X to be the city manager. Candidate X doesn't work out, and you talk about.
I'm not saying it doesn't work out, I'm just saying in ten years, he did, or five years, he decides to go somewhere else or retire. We're gonna do this whole process again.
The average.
By then, he will have that much more experience.
The average lifespan of a city manager is about seven years right now.
So, and, and on that note though, but you, you said a few minutes ago, or I'm sorry, about a minute ago, that you, we, we were preparing Jim for this, you know, further preparing him.
If it wasn't his time this time. That's all I'm saying. And he was looking at it and says, I want to be the city manager, then, then next go around, he'll know that much more. We stick him as the right-hand guy. He's the right-hand man for the city manager that gets hired, and suddenly he's got that much more knowledge.
And, and on that, but on that note though, we're looking for somebody who is going to be, you know, as permanent as possible. We're not looking for somebody to beat the average. We're looking just for somebody who's gonna be here for another twenty or thirty years.
But that's not.
We don't expect that, right.
No, I, I, I understand that, but we don't want to go in there with the assumption that this is somebody who's gonna be a stopgap measure, this is gonna be for the next five years or whatever, right?
And we're not doing that.
And, but, right, but, but that's the problem though. That, that's the concern, right? If, if the average expectancy is seven years, and that's what we're shooting for, right, but we're looking for somebody who's gonna be there long-term. Right, to your point.
Well, I say that, saying that, as we were told by Mr. Deutsch, you're lucky to get seven years out of somebody anymore. They don't have the attention span they used to have. But when you find the right candidate, they stay longer.
And would you not agree that a huge part of that is love of the place that you serve?
Are you saying the people that move here can't?
Can't love it? That we don't want new people to, to fall in love with Tawny Town?
And the other thing.
Wait, 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 no, 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 hold, hold, hold on a second, hold on a second, because you're, 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 you're engaging in a reductio ad absurdum. Because what I was getting at with the love of town is that if I'm from Alaska, right, and I see that Tawny Town is, is hiring, you know, for any kind of a, a job or position for city manager, and I want to apply for that, I'm from Alaska. I'm not gonna have that, some kind of love of this town, you know, as a, you know, as a, I guess you could call, almost consider it a prerequisite for my application, right? And then use me as a perfect example, right? I'm originally from New York. The reason why I was elected here was because I demonstrated a love of this town, because I demonstrated a love of service, because I knew this town as well as I could. And, you know, taking that, that, you know, personal relationship, that love, that is so crucial.
But you're not, you're not taking that away from those who direct the city manager. But we need someone that we can, that we know for sure is the best person to handle it when we're not here, because we're not full-time. As much as it feels like it many times, we're not full-time. And we need someone that we know for sure is the best person. We don't, the six of us don't have the time to do this search, or the resources, or the expertise. We have someone like Mr. Deutsch, who has done countless numbers of these searches, and is confident in the people that he brings to the table. A lot of them are people he knows personally, others are people he knows through connections, you know. He includes references in his, um, his proposal, Scott Hancock from MML, Dr. Whack from City of Westminster. I mean, it's people who know local government and who support what he does. I think right now, he's the interim city manager for. Chevrolet, yes. He was interim city manager for Sykesville. He was interim city manager for Westminster. You know, he fills in and helps fill these positions. He's great at what he does. And I think a resource like that at our disposal is gonna benefit us long-term.
And please allow me just to interject, this is not, you know, a disputation of his, his, you know, qualifications, or, or your, anybody's qualifications, because I trust all of you inherently, right? It's, it's just a concern that, you know, back to my original point, that, that, you know, as Councilman Hale also said, I believe that, that, you know, we have what we need. Just that simple.
I don't think we've done the appropriate work to know that. I think there is a due process that we should be doing to make sure that we know.
I understand that point.
I'll take one brief comment from the microphone.
Chris Tillman, Tan York Street. You know, I do know, you know, and, and you've obviously been, Darryl, you've been involved in hiring before. I know that thirty percent is not a large sum. That's a, a fairly common figure. I've been involved in those kind of searches myself. So I know that the, the dollar value is not tremendously huge. But what is more important to that, to the people of Tawny Town, is that this is a transparent process. You know, the recent election, as I'm sure you gentlemen surely understand, and, and, and you ladies as well, that these three gentlemen were just elected, their positions brought in on the wings of change. And the last thing you want to be seen as doing at this point in time is going back to the good old boy network of Tawny Town. With all due respect to Jim, who has been here for a long time and is excellent at his job, the last thing you want to be seen as doing is, is going back to that network. If you make the nationwide search and you make a transparent effort at it, and that the public can have confidence in, if Jim is the right man, Jim is the right man. I tend to agree with you. I believe Jim is probably the right man. But you have to make that effort for the voters who put you all into office. Because I don't think not, not doing the search, I think, would, would work more to your detriment. And, and a whole lot, and be worth a whole lot more than the thirty thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. All right, so I would like, we've, we've had great discussion about this. I would like to entertain a motion, if possible, for this search.
I make a motion that we allocate thirty thousand dollars for the search.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any further discussion before we take the vote?
Just one thing. In every piece of literature or information that I put out for my campaign, I said that my vote was the higher from within. Okay, so I'm not, it's not a transparency thing. Maybe it's just, you know, it is what it is, but that's it, sir.
Thank you. Anything additional? All right, I have a motion and a second to allocate thirty thousand dollars for city manager search. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That passes three to two. I appreciate the input of everybody in that discussion. And we shall move on accordingly. Next, we have property acquisition. I'm not going as far as to say, let's acquire property. I would like to ask the council regarding the property on Dunbar Lane. I believe most everyone has heard about or visited the property in question. Discussions for that currently vacant building, possibly a community rec center, as well as Public Works facility. I'd like us to consider moving forward and doing so. I would like to have the building and property appraised, which has come in at a quote of thirty-five hundred dollars to have it appraised, for us to then move forward and decide if we want to do anything further with it. So I would like to entertain a motion that we approve getting that property appraised for our further consideration.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And what discussion will we have?
Would the appraisal also include, I, I guess, an inspection?
No, it's a separate thing.
Okay. So we would have to do an inspection in addition to the appraisal?
Well, the theory is that we would receive an appraisal, and then based on that, we can make a conditional offer that would be based on inspections, environmental studies, and all of those things, giving us an out in the meantime. But we really need to know where this property and building would be appraised, that we can make a fair judgment on whether we want to pursue it or not. Not right now, we're having, let us converse, please. Any additional comments we wish to have on it?
We, we can at least get it appraised. I mean.
Well, but I don't think an appraisal will take into consideration the issues with the flooding and, and the damage that it's gotten.
Are we putting the cart before the horse if we try to do some type of inspection prior to an appraisal?
I believe you are, yeah. I mean, really, we, we really need to have an offer in there to be able to have someone go in and inspect. and to do these things. I believe, Mr. Gallow, you may have any additional insight into this process?
I mean, you gotta look at it from the perspective of maybe the seller. They're not just gonna let everybody traipse through there and do whatever they want. They wanna know that you wanna buy it. And to do that, you have to have a contract of sale. So, in order to get the contract of sale, you have to know whether or not it's valued at what you're willing to spend. And since we're a public entity, we aren't required to, but we typically want an appraisal so we know we're in the ballpark. So if you follow the train of thought from the beginning, we get it appraised to say, well, this is what we would be willing to offer and it helps you drive your offer. Then you have your contract of sale where the guy may say, well, I'm not gonna take what you're gonna pay. So there's no further negotiation. But if the person says, yeah, I'll take that, then in the contract of sale, there's gonna be provisions that say, but it's contingent on us doing a successful environmental, it's contingent on us doing a successful structural, whatever things we do, and we'd have a period of time, kinda like a home inspection, but obviously much more involved, that we could say, well, we've looked at this and it floods, it has asbestos, it had, whatever. We can't be, we can't take it, and then the deal's off. Or we can take it and we can move forward with that. But you wouldn't wanna spend a lot of money doing inspections on a property that you really don't have under contract because they could turn around and say, we're not selling it to you.
And another concern I had that you articulated was the fact that there are conditional methods of pulling out.
Of course, yeah. I mean, it's, we would not be tied in until we know for sure yea or nay on it.
So we have to do the appraisal to have the inspection, is essentially what I'm getting here?
We, we have to have a, a contingent sales contract, which we really can't assemble until we have an appraisal to know what the building's worth and what we're willing to spend on it.
I mean, you did one, we'll just use what we did, so we don't, we can do non-hypotheticals. We knew what the properties on Stumptown Road were listed for. They were listed on the market where this property you're considering right now is not. But they were listed on the market, this is what they wanted. What they wanted and what the value of them is, may be two separate things. So the city said, we're gonna do an appraisal to make sure we're gonna be paying fair value cuz we want the people to know we paid fair value. So you got an independent person who did what the calculations are to say, this is the fair value. It turns out that the appraised value was less by a significant amount
Central amount, yes.
than what the asking price was. We didn't share all that with the owner. We just basically came in and said, well, we'll offer X for the property, knowing what we knew the appraised value was, and if the owner agreed, then we came up with the contract of sale. We didn't do any further inspections because it was open space. But in this situation, the contract of sale, once we agree on price, would also have those other concerns. So simplified, yes, you have to do one before you would get to the other. But.
I apologize, no, go ahead.
By doing this appraisal, are we saying that we're interested in buying this?
By talking about it in the public session on TV or.
We, we're expressing interest in the property in some way, shape or form.
We would, we, when we talked about that, the mayor and I talked about this in, in general, is there, this should be straight up in the fact that the last one we did was drive by a field. It was easy to do the appraisal. We want the appraiser to go in this building, so maybe that's not your inspection because they're not inspectors. But we want them to go in the building and say, well, you know, this building isn't, it's part of the value of the appraisal. So the owner is gonna know this cuz we're gonna have to contact him saying, we're interested in negotiating with you, but it's city money. We have to have an appraisal done. We need you to let us have access to the property for that. And if the appraisal works out for something that we can agree on and you can agree on, then we'll take the next step. They may say, we're, we're not interested in letting you do that at all, in which case.
Then it's done.
You're back to where you are. The issue that you sorta have here is the fact that it's not listed on the market. If it were listed on the market, then we could get a real estate agent, we could go tour the property, we could do things like on a normal situation. But here, it's owner for sale by owner right now.
Right.
So we need that cooperation.
Well, I'll be honest, after looking at it, I think it's more of a money pit than anything else, so I. We just bought a bigger property.
I guess that's what I'm getting at. Um, do we have to spend money on an appraisal for something, I guess, that we know we don't want?
Well, I, I wasn't, I, I was under the impression you wanted it, so.
There are people in the city that want it.
Okay, so, if you're not interested in doing it, if, if, I mean, th- this is a little beyond me, but in the event that you all decide, we're not interested in buying this at all, and you say that, and a majority of you say that, then there's no need to go forward.
Right.
Because if the appraisal came back and said, it's worth X, and everybody's like, this is great, but you all don't wanna buy it, there would be no sense in doing the appraisal.
I guess that's what I'm getting at. You know, the appraisal comes back at what he's asking for.
You gotta assume that it's gonna be close, or you're gonna, that's just hypothetical.
Okay, if it's, okay, it's gonna be close?
It's gonna be close, and maybe you'd be able to negotiate something. But let's say the appraisal came back and said, it's only worth half what he's asking for. They're probably not gonna sell it to you.
Okay.
So it's gotta be close in order for you to negotiate further. But if you're not willing to do it at any price, then why?
Then we say something.
I'm not willing to do it anywhere near what he's asking.
Right. And that's, you know, that's a valid point. You figure, I don't, I don't know the specifics and I don't wanna know, but is he off by ten percent? Is he off by twenty percent? I mean, if he's off by a hundred percent, he's probably.
If he, if they come somewhere near that, I think it'll be times two by the time you get it where you want it.
I, I think that's reasonable, that the renovation costs will be equal to your acquisition cost.
I think in this case, it's gonna be well over that.
If, if I may, and Councilman Hale, I apologize for putting you on the spot, but you've had experience with rec centers before in that whole process. Is there any, you know, institutional wisdom that you could impart in this con? I'm, I'm sorry, I mean, I really don't mean to put you on the spot, but I know that you have experience with this.
No, I appreciate that, Joe. So what would happen many years ago with our rec center that we did create and get up and running? It was, the building was already there. It was a lot of crafts and that type of thing. It wasn't renovating a building, adding on to it, cuz it needed it. Because at forty-seven or whatever the fire, um, um, occupancy for that little building was, we were always in violation. Every time we did something successful. And, um, so I don't have a lot of experience in that, Joe. Um, I didn't mean to allude to that, but.
No, no, that's, that's all right.
I know I want one.
Right.
We've been talking about it for a decade. It's like a bypass. Yeah, but this is something we can probably do on our own, on our own terms. Spending three thousand dollars for an appraisal is a logical first step. You know, we gotta look at the square footage. You know, we, we have, you know, some bargaining chips that we could talk about later. Um, but, um, you know, we're gonna spend thirty thousand dollars to find a city manager, might as well spend three thousand.
You bring that up.
But we might as well spend three thousand dollars, see if, if the building is, um, worth it. I'd certainly like, and I think the mayor has, um, we had talked, I mean, we, the building does need to be inspected. You know, there's a multiple, there's a very.
There's no question.
Yeah, so, I mean, but that would be good stewards of our taxpayers' dollars. Cuz that, that square footage is rare in Tawny Town. Just look around, you know.
Well, let me, let me ask a que, I mean, cuz again, I'm, for a commercial building like this, or a building of this size, I'm not, you know, particularly familiar with it. So would it be out of the realm of possibility for us to request, uh, having a real estate agent do, I don't know, some kind of like a walkthrough, something that would proceed making some kind of, you know, like a move to, to have an appraisal, like if the property owner would be, would be, would be willing to consent to having someone that we, you know, send out just to look things over?
That's what the appraiser would do.
That is an appraisal.
Yeah, I mean.
But without being that formal, I mean.
Well, the thing is, what are you gonna get out of it that you won't get from an appraisal?
The question in, in our last, when this was set, cuz the recent precedent was the Stumptown Road, is that the city, meaning the council, wanted to be able to say to the citizens, we just didn't make a number up. Because that's what you're gonna do pretty quick when you start negotiating, is that we had a professional appraiser. And the appraiser, he takes into account the square footage, the condition, the age, similar properties that sold. If they're not, where else did they sell? The locate, all, all that stuff. They, it's a factor, I mean, a formula they do. So you were able to turn around and say, you may disagree with us for buying this, but we paid the value that it was worth because you had set that limit. And then you negotiated off that value. And that's the problem with not having something like that, is that all of a sudden, you're just wheeling and dealing with a price. In a situation where we had a real estate agent the last time, we still did the appraiser. Before we ever got the real estate agent engaged, because we wanted to know what our offer was gonna be, and we based it on the appraisal.
And the appraiser would, I guess, do a cursory kind of like inspection, like he would.
The condition would be a factor in the appraisal.
Okay.
Like if the appraiser was gonna appraise a house, something we're familiar with, okay? And they go into the basement of your house and see mold, or they see water spots. They're not gonna tell you where it comes from and how to fix it, which is what your inspections would be. But they're gonna say, this has a water problem in here, and that means to fix that usually costs ten thousand dollars, minus ten thousand. They may go to this roof and look, and they say, well, this roof is thirty years old, and I can see where it leaks through here. Uh, to fix a rubber roof costs XXX, and then all factors into the value.
Okay.
Something to that effect.
So it, it basically is the same for, you know, like a building of that size as it would be for a house?
No, that's why it costs extra to have a commercial building appraised.
Thirty-five hundred. This would be like what the bank sends an appraiser to your house to make sure it's valued at what you said you were going to pay for it to the seller. And they wanna say, hmm, let, let us check it out to make sure it is. It's our insurance policy, if you will.
Gotcha.
And what I was in, kind of envisioning was, if you got to the point where you got to your contingencies periods, you would hire, like, a structural engineer. That sounds expensive and, but you would hire, like, a souped-up building inspector, a person that does commercial inspections, that would know, I'm climbing up on the roof and being able to check this. I mean, the flood planes, the things like that, that go beyond value, go beyond what it is you have to spend to make it better, if that makes any sense.
It does, it does. Thank you.
Out of curiosity, where are we getting the money for this? Not the, not the thirty-five hundred.
Well, I give you the thirty-second thought here. If you, you, oh, you're saying you're not the thirty-five hundred? I was gonna answer that question.
Yeah, no.
But it relates to the bigger one. Um, any money that you spend, thirty-five hundred or anything going towards that, before we spend it, we would wanna pass a reimbursement resolution. So that would be a resolution we pass saying, we intend to do a certain thing and finance it. And any money we spend before we get to the point of financing it, we're gonna reimburse ourselves. So if you compare it to buying a house again, all the things you did to, like, check your new house out would be reimbursed to you when you get your mortgage. And then your mortgage would come in and you'd pay yourself back. So that's how typically things are done, because typically they're public financed. These aren't usually paid with cash. I mean, any public, um, finance advisor like ours would say, you don't wanna spend your cash. It took you a long time to make your cash. And if you're doing to an asset that has a long life, you want the people that are using that asset over the long life of it to pay, and that's your tax money every year, as opposed to getting rid of your reserve that you built up. That's typical public finance. But I don't know that that's how you're doing it. That's just how it's typically done.
The other thing is that there are, um, and I know everybody throws this out every time, but there are, um, capital grant options through the Department of General Services with their, uh, capital grants and loans program. So, I mean.
Yeah, it just would've been better if we had bought the downtown property.
Right, there's.
I'd feel a little better about buying property in town, which was the point.
So to, uh, to Councilman Hale's point, that, you know, there are, there are, I mean, that, that is something that I, you know, heard myself, even though I wasn't campaigning this last time around, is that people are very interested in having some kind of recreational center. Um, and if the only way that we can determine beyond the shadow of a doubt that this building is, uh, you know, worth pursuing or not, I think we have to have the appraisal then.
Yeah, I mean, we can at least make an effort.
All right, all in favor of approving an appraisal done on this property, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay. Last but not least, we have an amendment to the T-Mobile lease. This comes to us from the IT department. I looked over it, but I believe either Mr. Wyprick or Mr. Gallow may have better information to provide to us on this.
Well, just very quickly, uh, T-Mobile is proposing to put up, uh, new antenna equipment, but also to add a generator and pad, uh, on the ground at the standpipe site. Typically, when one of our cell carriers on our tower or standpipe increase their presence, we work to renegotiate their lease, to charge them a little bit more for the extra space that they're taking. Uh, we did so with T-Mobile and, uh, the, their improvement plans have already been reviewed. That's, that's part of our, our routine with our, our existing contracts, our existing leases. They upgrade equipment all the time. Uh, it gets reviewed by CDM Smith. Dan Dennis coordinates with the provider. Usually it's a third party that's doing the improvements. At any rate, um, we negotiated with T-Mobile, and I should, I have to give Dan credit here. He's the one that's actually been dealing with them directly. He and I just talk about things, big picture, and say, okay, well, let's try this. And then he goes out and he gets it done. He has been doing a great job with these leases. Um, so the improvements have been reviewed by CDM. We're ready to go. All we need to do is, um, approve the lease agreement that allows them to upgrade their antenna facilities and add the generator and pad. And in exchange, they're going to, we're increasing their rent by two hundred and fifty dollars a month. So this will be the second amendment to the lease, and Jay's reviewed it, so we're ready to go with it. We just need approval.
I just have one question. How'd you come up with two fifty? Why not five hundred?
I was just wondering, you know.
In that case, why not a thousand?
Yeah, where'd you get two hundred and fifty dollars from?
We, not to get into too much detail with the cameras rolling and everything, but we evaluated, um, the amount of space, the number of antennas that they have up on, on the standpipe, how much ground area they've got compared to the other leases, kinda came up with a, you know, here's how much per square foot on the ground, how much per square foot on the tower. And, um, based on what we thought was, I'll say, the going rate here in town. That's how it came up.
Sounds very scientific.
Jim, what kind of generator is this? Propane or, um, electric?
I am, it's not, well.
I mean, if it's propane, we got a tank involved and all that.
I believe it is.
Access.
I believe it's propane, um, but I would have to follow up with, with the specs on that. And, and the specs will be attached to the, the lease that's, that will be on file. Um, I did not give you the construction drawings as part of this. I didn't think that was really necessary at this level.
Yeah, that's kind of outside of our.
I was just asking about.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right, above our pay grade.
And there, there has been some back and forth on the, on the plans themselves. Um, you know, we, we specified that, that they needed to have a certain enclosure for the generator to reduce the noise because there is a dwelling very close to the, the site there. So we were trying to be aware of the possible impact on, you know, on that property as well. So there was, there was some back and forth as far as the plans before they got approved, so.
Okay. Uh, may I have a motion to, I guess at this point, hang on, let me see. I guess we're directing staff to go forward with this amendment. Is that correct?
Yeah, just a motion to approve.
We just need to approve.
Very good. Then I'm seeking a motion to approve the amendment to the T-Mobile lease.
Is that moved?
And do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amendment to the T-Mobile lease. Any further discussion on that? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, thank you very much. I guess you can move that on to Mr. Dennis then to execute accordingly. All right. Councilman reports. There's a light at the end of the tunnel this evening. Uh, Mr. Haynes, Councilman Haynes, if you would begin with your report?
Uh, so I don't have anything new or exciting, uh, from the. Uh, so I don't have anything new or exciting from the department...
You're a disappointment to us all.
From the Department of Public Works, um, the CCRC has its meeting slated for the fourth quarter, uh, sometimes before Thanksgiving, I can't remember the date, but you all will be duly informed of what we discuss. Other than that, nothing really to report.
Very good. Councilman Hale, do you have anything for us this evening?
Sir, there's a couple items. The grandstand is all but, I think it's, it may actually be finished now.
Okay.
The big diamond. Um, there was an issue when we were at MML, uh, the mayor brought to my attention about a concern in the park. Well, a couple phone calls later, Bob Mitchell and, and Kevin Speak worked on it together, didn't realize this, but it, it sort of dawned on me that Bob doesn't have any staff.
Right.
So the labor is done by, um, Daniel's division, actually. And so, with the dump truck being down, we had gullies in, underneath all the swings and that type of thing, so, so, and a point, uh, customer, yeah, customer. So this citizen made a complaint, and it's very quickly resolved, um, within, within days, you know, and it's my understanding, I think we were a friend from this citizen, he wants to now talk about maybe doing some fundraising for parks and that type of thing, so win, win for all of us, and great, uh, city staff, uh, partnership.
It's a great cooperative effort there, getting everyone involved and on the same page to get that resolved, and thank you, Councilman Hale, for taking care of that.
Yes, sir, thank you. Just one more thing, please.
Yep.
Before we meet again, um, West Carroll Cheer, they're having a huge fundraising event, um, August 3rd, down at the, um, football field. And, um, they, what they would like to do, and they realize they have to go through the county on this, get a one-day permit for, sort of, exactly what we did down at the Wine Festival. They wanna be able to, to have beer there, or sell beer there. So, a- again, huge fundraising event, they're gonna have, um, um, what's the, uh, the beanbag thing?
Cornhole?
Yes, that, yeah, I hear that's catching on, I'm not really sure.
Catching on, that's...
Yeah, I know.
That's been caught for four years.
I know, but, so they're having a huge...
If it's not pickleball, it's nothing anymore.
So they're having a huge tournament down there, so it's a big fundraiser for them, they're very excited about it. It's very nice to watch that group and many others in, um, point at Area Rec Council, or Tony Town Area, Athletic Association, Satiation, rather, how, there's just, it's, there, there's, it's, it's growing, it's, it's coming. And Dan, you're, you're a big part of that, and now we're gonna have a full board, so what they're asking for is consensus from the councils, so that, um, if they come by to get their permit from the county, that we're not, uh, we're not opposed to it.
I think if they work with, I think there's a few things with us they'll have to do as well for that, is that correct, Mr. Wyper?
No, they'll be coordinating things with, with, um, Bob Mitchell, and, and he'll be coordinating things with the police department as far as, you know, coverage for the event, and, you know, there's gonna be money changing hands down there and things like that, so it's something we need to plan for.
Okay. Very good. Anything else from you, sir?
Um, no, sir.
Okay. Mayor Porter Tim Foster, what do you have for us this evening?
I'd like to remind everybody that, um, this Friday is the Business Breakfast. Uh, we'll have Heather Dewees, the clerk of the Carroll County Court. Our local farmer's market, I believe, well, it's the first one I noticed, it started this past weekend, um, over at the Christian Learning Center. Comcast also this month will be featuring, you know, our cable access channel, which I think is a very nice thing, they showcase Tony Town businesses. In July, they'll be showcasing Bess and Ben's and Better Than New. The Wine Fest was a huge success. The, uh, everybody was happy, the food vendors, uh, the sponsorship doubled from last year. The event, uh, the wineries were pleased, so it was a, a huge success. Also, uh, the Presbyterian Church building has been sold to St. James Orthodox Church from Mount Airy. Nancy met with the ministers there, and they're planning on opening to the public around September, October. I would like to make everybody aware, who is not aware, the town is sponsoring a thank you dinner for Jim McCarron, for his many years of public service and dedication to Tony Town. It'll be July 18th, held at the Fireman's Activity Building. It'll be a dinner, and the cost is $15, and I wanna see everybody there. But, um, we think that, um, it'll be a very nice affair. We've arranged some proclamations for Jim from the governor and the Carroll delegation, and it should be a nice event, it'll be, uh, from 6 to 8 in the evening, it's a Thursday evening. And this happened over the weekend, so I'm not sure if people are aware, um, our fellow mayor, Rup, lost his mother, um, over the holiday weekend, and the services have been held already, I think they were held on the 5th. So I think it would be a nice gesture if we were to send an acknowledgement to Mayor Rup, and, uh, maybe a small donation to the church, uh, St. Paul United Methodist Church in New Windsor.
We will coordinate that accordingly.
And Claire, I have the information where to send that, if you'd like. That's it.
All right. Councilman Vigliotti, do you have anything for us this evening?
Yes, sir. Uh, so a briefer report than usual, which is probably good. So for the month of... So for the month of June 2019, uh, the total dispatch of generated calls for service numbered 458, total number of citations issued were 40, total number of warnings issued were 20, the total number of adult arrests were 15, and the total number of juvenile arrests were four. In terms of good news, the police department has opened up their hiring process and are currently accepting applications for both entry-level and lateral police officers until July 31st. In terms of community outreach, Sergeant Castellar attended Tony Town Elementary School's fifth-grade graduation ceremonies. Uh, in addition to Relay for Life, multiple officers attended and provided security for the 2019 Tony Town Volunteer Fire Department Carnival. The event was well-attended, and no criminal incidents were reported throughout the week. Sergeant Castellar, Corporal Schultz, Officer Sacadallas and Williams attended the annual Wine and Arts Festival with no incidents reported there either. Officers also provided a chance for attendees to navigate an obstacle course utilizing goggles specifically designed to simulate alcohol impairment. And of special note, I don't know if anybody's seen the paper recently, but our Facebook page, and in specifically, in specific, our officer Steven Sacadallas was featured, uh, he's the gentleman who manages our Facebook page, and we received tremendous positive feedback from not even just members of our own community, but beyond, nationwide, with people who are amazed at how engaging and warm and community-oriented our police department is. And, uh, Mr. Sacadallas, as well as our police department as a whole, deserve tremendous credit for their community-orientedness, and I wanted to make a special note of that, so congratulations to them on a job well-done, as always, and that's it for me tonight.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilwoman Fuller, do you have anything for us this evening?
The commission was kinda light, um, I think we're only looking at maybe two potential daycares at the zoning, when was that meeting?
That was on the 1st.
Wednesday, yeah, so I think that's essentially all we've been working on. It's been, it's been nice and quiet, so that is all I have, oh, except for to mention that the, um, convention week.
Right.
Was very informative, um, got a lot of new information, and, and we'll hopefully be carrying that over. Hopefully, everybody had fun. That's it.
Very good, thank you all. I do have, um, of note, myself, Mayor Porter Tim Foster, and Nate McCormick attended the Silver Oak Academy graduation. Uh, it was a very nice event, I think it was seven, you know, seven students graduated. Really great to see what these young men have become, uh, very respectable members of, of society, and that institution is outstanding for this area. I know they help the city out a lot, uh, with volunteering and, and contributing in different ways, so, uh, great graduation up there. I wanted to mention, of course, the carnival, as previously mentioned, I hear was a great success, I know the weather was kind of a damper on, on some nights, um, when I attended, I think it was a great time, uh, even considering the weather, the way it was. MML conference was a great week, uh, I know for myself, I'm sure everyone else here, with the, the networking, the people we met, the resources we found, and, and those different things, are really gonna help carry the city forward. I thank everyone on council who went, I thank you Councilman Vigliotti to make sure the city didn't burn down while we were away. Aside from that, Business Breakfast on Friday, and I really have nothing more, except that just remind everyone, I do have office hours at City Hall every Friday, when City Hall's open, you're free to come and visit me or call me. Uh, if you wanna meet, you can make an appointment as well. Um, just wanna keep everyone reminded of that, I will be here on Friday. If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry?
I was wanting to talk about the Sewell property.
I, I understand, right, it's... Is that something, is that something we can discuss after the meeting, you and I?
No, I think it's for general public.
It's for general public?
Well, we're combining the meetings, so...
Feel free. All right, please come on up to the mic and...
Barbara Cook, Clubside Drive, uh, I'd like to talk about the X, uh, N X. Will the Sewell property butt up to Tony Town, or will it leave a strip of no man's land between the Sewell Farm and Tony Town?
We'll figure out how that annexation goes, we're not sure yet.
Yeah.
Okay. As a citizen, I like to say I favor the Sewell property, because it does not eat up pieces of farm, large pieces of farmland. And from my experience of living at Carroll Vista, many of the people are drawn from Howard County and Montgomery County, and people like it out here because they have, uh, no commutes, and there's three colleges, and that's all things that are very good, and I think since we're building Meads Crossing, it's gonna bring in many, many small children, and these over 55 commu- communities balance it out, they bring in high taxes, and they balance out, and they balance out all these young children that are coming in, and I'm favor of, in favor of both of them, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Say no.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.